Hello and welcome to today's citizen input session of city council. Everyone who fills out a card will have the opportunity to speak for two minutes. To my left, to your right is where you can fill out the cards and you can still do so. The first speaker is Helen Jones. Helen Jones. Going once, going twice. Next speaker is Joe Mallory.
Hello, Mayor and Council, hello?
Yeah, why don't you go to the middle one?
I thought red means stop. Okay, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak on behalf of an item on the agenda dealing with the city carryover funds for the UMA-DOP organization, which is the Urban Minority Alcoholism Drug Abuse Outreach Program. This organization's been around for close to 40 years. This organization was based and built to try to treat African-Americans and Hispanic-Americans in the community for alcoholism and drug abuse treatment. This agency has been around for almost 40 years doing the work to try to deal with addiction and mental health and trauma for almost 40 years. This was before it was in vogue to get into the medication-assisted treatment program when you have all these agencies because of the opioid epidemic getting into the treatment business because it's profitable. A lot of them only been in existence for a couple of years and they are doing medication-assisted treatment because they can make a lot of money off of it from methadone, suboxone, and those types of medication treatment programs. Our agency was doing it before there was money available and before it was a big crisis in the community. It wasn't a big crisis when it was a crack epidemic, but I want the council to understand that we need to have some cultural competency and that they need to look with a racial equity lens because when money is given to organizations, the minority organizations, they always want to cut their money down and give them a little bit or the crumbs that's left over. So our request should be given as much weight as some of these other agencies who are coming into the business and we should have some equity. Don't look to cut down any funds when we make a request for the good work that we want to do for the community. I retired in March. I volunteered to work at this agency for three months because they were having some transition. I wasn't getting paid. I did it because there's a need and it's necessary and it's for our community. So I was asked that everybody support the legislations on the agenda tonight.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mann.
Actually, Mr. Mallory, it's not on the... the motions that we voted on Monday were not ready to come to council, so we're still working out the carryover. So none of those items are on the revised calendar. I'm sorry for your inconvenience.
Well, I looked on the email and I got the... it was on there yesterday.
Well, no, it was revised this morning. I apologize.
Okay. How do I get on the list to get the most up-to-date information?
All right. Karen Robertson, followed by Michael Tombrege.
I'm sure you're aware of a new working group that's been established to study the spiraling rise of property taxes and the tax abatement program. Our abatement program is 20 years old and it was established at a time when our city was losing its population to the suburbs and was written as an incentive to get people to move back to the city. Times have changed and the abatement program is not working for our city in the way it was originally intended. Our high-risk neighborhoods in need of residential tax abatements are being overlooked by developers. Instead, developers are choosing to build housing in low-risk investment neighborhoods. The abatement program is written in such a way that allows this to happen. So as a result, neighborhoods like Hyde Park, Mount Lookout, and Oakley are being saturated with new construction, teardowns, lot splits, and the removal of green space. If we don't change our abatement program, these low-risk neighborhoods will suffer permanently from being overbuilt. The tax abatement program should offer incentives to developers so they focus their work in high-risk neighborhoods where they can reduce blight and abandoned housing and bring back new homeowners. Now, the working group recognizes this problem and they're right now in the process of reevaluating the abatement policy. Soon, they'll be recommending changes, changes that are going to benefit all 52 neighborhoods of the city. So I'm here to ask you to allow the working group the time that it needs to complete their work before council considers new legislation on tax abatements. Now is the time to push... now is not the time to push through independent legislation on such a complicated issue. And most importantly, council cannot allow the tax abatement issue to be turned into a political bargaining chip. Should this happen, council will not have the city's best interests at heart. So please feel free to reach out to the working group, share your ideas on improving the abatement program and countering the high rise of property taxes because getting the tax abatement program right is vital for the future of our city and our residents.
Michael Tombrege, followed by Young Town French.
The tax abatements for remodeling and home... new home construction is the same. It should be abolished. There are two solid reasons why we remodel our houses or build a new one: to have a better lifestyle and to increase our property values. Those are two very, very strong, solid reasons. We do not need a tax abatement to remodel our homes. The city is losing money on this. So I am one who thinks that the free markets should reign, let capitalism work, and the years leading up into 2008, the government tried to intervene in the real estate market and we all know what happened there. And the same bad things are happening in this tax abatement world. It's not needed and if we... if we can't abolish it completely, perhaps we just allocate it to affordable housing and then our... all this complicated mess goes away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jung Hwan, French.
Hello, I live in Hyde Park and I'm here to support my husband's project, City Homes at Wason Way. I'm a head pianist at the Cincinnati Ballet and I own Hyde Park Piano Studio. I run my studio and my home. I'm the only one who teaches and this is a small, minority, woman-owned business I'm really proud of and I'm part of the musical force behind all students I develop. Before I called this country as my home, I lived in a big cities. And all these places I lived before had many things in common: walkable neighborhoods, safe to bike, safe to walk, and I felt safe. And I want to give that to my son as well, who is 11 years old. Now, at this current condition, can I do the same thing for my son at this proposed site? I don't think I can. I don't feel safe. I know we have wonderful resources out there, but I do not feel so. Now, change is really hard and is unthinkable for many people, but I think this project that my husband is bringing will make the city better for my son, for your grandchildren, sons, everybody out there. So instead of channeling all the negative energies that is going around, I would love people to sit together and make these things happen, not for us in this room, but for everybody out there, for younger generations, and for the future. I really believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Schwenderman.
Hello, I'm here to speak on the rezoning of Wason. I live at 3046 Portsmouth with my wife and two small sons. We... my wife and I are not anti-development. We... all we ask of the city is that consideration for safety and respect to the tax-paying neighbors adjacent to the property is done so, is offered by the city. I'm so sorry. I have great concerns over the existing project proposed by Ken French with... if it's changed to SF2, great variances are still required for his project to fit. The area could be zoned SF6 and built upon an SF6. It could be developed under SF6 with the same variances. His variances would push his property closer to the Wason Trail and closer to my backyard where my son's play. I'm concerned with the bias as it pertains to his traffic study. The study was a single-day study for hours in the morning and the evening on a Tuesday. I do not feel as if this is accurate, or I'm sorry, sufficient in determining the traffic pattern and the safety of this area. I believe an independent study must be done. I've watched the developer measure in the area with a measuring tape, the same one I have in my basement. He has completed a survey from Wason Inn. Why has this land not been thoroughly surveyed to determine the true width of this property? I'm concerned that it's inaccurately considered 40 feet. And most importantly, I'm concerned going forward with the work with this developer. He has made many mis... has misled the community. He claimed on a piece of paper put out by him that he is an architect. We, as a community, if we're going to develop this land, let's develop it appropriately. Let's develop it thoroughly. Let's develop it for our city by the people who are meant to build. Architects are meant to build. Let's work together. Let's work together.
Sean Suter, followed by Lori Quinleben.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Sean Suter, on behalf of the petitioner for the Wason Road rezoning at McCalfee-Halter in Griswold downtown. The city zoning of this property as SF6 mandates 6,000 to 8,000 square foot single-family lot zoning. That does not leave an economically viable use of the property. The standard is not "no development," it is "economically viable use of the property." And this was by design. Back in 2005, the neighborhood convinced city council to rezone the property from commercial to single-family residential for the purpose of blocking unwanted commercial development. So the property's been sitting there for 14 years along railroad tracks with no interest from anyone that we're aware of in buying it and developing it in accordance with single-family six zoning. And the neighborhood thought that that was the end of the story, that by rezoning it to SF6, they had ensured that the property would never be developed, that it would remain fallow ground. But times have changed since 2005, as you know. The property's alongside a pedestrian bike trail now rather than a railroad and it's across from a retail convenience center in an era where walkable developments are in high demand. This petition has brought to light that the property has no economically viable use as it is zoned. The petitioner is simply asking the city to rezone the property to allow for economically viable lot sizes of 2,000 to 4,000 square feet. That's all. The uses in the SF2 are the same as the uses in the SF6. Nothing changes there but the lot sizes, creating economically viable lot sizes. And we believe the city planning staff, the city... and the city planning commission agreed and approved the request to rezoning and we believe that's the right outcome for this property. The property has to be rezoned to an economically viable use. That's the city's duty. It cannot remain fallow as the neighbors would like. So this is a petition and a request for economic viability. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Quinleben, followed by Stephon Pryor.
Mayor Crowley and members of council. I'm a Mount Lookout resident and mother whose family looks forward to using the Wason Way bike trail, as do 50 other families whose letters of support I have. If for some reason they have not made it to your inbox through Andy Genley and Planning, I will make sure you get them. You've invested in the bike trail to attract development and new residents to our city in part, and now we have the first development along the trail and it is a shining example of smart growth, one that you can be proud of. We know that you all care about pedestrian safety and this project is going to increase that by sidewalks, installing sidewalks, and a signalized crosswalk across Wason Road. And if you support economic development, this project's going to generate tax revenue for the city in a parcel that's currently generating none. If you favor inclusiveness and including the citizens in development, you should support this. The developer, he is a friend of mine from Kilgore. We're both Kilgore parents. He asked me to help with community engagement. We started going door-to-door back in May. Since then, there's been about 12 public hearings and presentations. City planning has approved the project. The planning commission has approved the project. And if you'll check the opposition letters you've received, the opposition didn't really build until after the Hyde Park Community Council came out against this project in mid-August. Amid the fears is getting lost one important thing. Instead of building as many homes as you can on this parcel, this developer is actually going to leave public spaces on each end for the public to use. He's investing $100,000 to improve those green spaces and asking citizens to design it.
Thank you.
Please help us make this happen.
Stephon Pryor, followed by Ken French.
How y'all doing?
Good.
All right, all right. Half of y'all ain't here today. What's up with this? They been absent, Mayor Crowley. They gotta be here, all right? Tax abatement, Mayor Crowley? Y'all need to work on that. How you... A tax abatement? Y'all be giving everybody else tax abatement deals, but ain't giving the right people the right deals. And that's not cool. How you doing, David Mann over there? I heard that voice. But, uh, UMA-DOP? Y'all should give them that money, Mayor Crowley. You know, that drug treatment program? Why not? You give money to everybody else? I miss you too, man. I ain't seen you the last, what, three or four council meetings. Every time I come, you just come upstairs after I get done. I'm glad to see you today. But, uh, I'm gonna give y'all grades today, all right? Lassman, for that red light camera thing you doing, I'm gonna give you an F- for that. That was a bad decision. Wendell Young, you be here all time. I'm gonna give you a C+. Amy, oh, you get a D-, just for Amy. David Mann, you been here every meeting. You get an A+. PG, give you a B-. Chris Sealback, you get a B+. And Jeff Paster, I'm gonna give you a C+ man. You know, y'all been all right. Y'all been all right this season. Y'all need to keep carrying on with doing good things, man. But Mayor Crowley, we need a tax abatement deal. You helping every developer out in the city besides me. You need to start helping me out too. Everybody else getting money. So I'm just calling it out as I see it. Red light camera thing, we don't want that. We don't want that. I didn't come to talk to you about it, but we don't want that right now because that's a bad decision. We need... we don't need officers giving out tickets, mailing out tickets to you. That ain't cool, no. But anyway, Mayor Crowley, nice seeing you. I ain't gonna get you today. Got company back here.
Thank you. Ken French, followed by Lynn Schnerring.
Good afternoon, my name's Ken French. I'm working on a project adjacent to the Kroger Center on Wason Way. We had a long hearing this morning and there were a number of items brought up, one of which was the property needs to have a professional survey. We have that and I hope we get the chance to share that with the neighbors. There's been quite a number of concerns about a traffic study and I hope we can get the supervising engineer from the Department of Transportation to weigh in on it. This was a... I paid for it. It was an independent study and it seems that a lot of the neighbors don't trust the study. So I hope we will get a chance at some point to get Brian Williams, the supervising engineer, to weigh in on that. And finally, there's been a number of concerns about how we deal with drainage. Now, when we went through the coordinated site review, the city's drainage engineers said, "You guys are going to need to capture all of your rainwater." And it's going to be a requirement to pull a permit. Again, the neighbors said, "How can we trust that this will really happen?" The fact is, it's going to be a requirement and we've been working on this process since April. I really appreciate the leadership of the city planning department that has kind of guided us through this thing and the city planning commission that has helped us through this thing. And I really appreciate the leadership right here in front of us. So thank you for your time and your effort for the city of Cincinnati.
Lynn Schnerring, followed by Ann Gimbert, followed by Paul Rudolph.
My name is Lynn Schnerring. I live at 3040 Portsmouth, right behind the bike trail and the new property development. And I'd like to thank the city for the $12 million investment in the bike trail, which will be right in our backyard, and we're happy about that. I'd just like to have a few observations about the parcel that's being asked rezoned from SF6 to an SF2 doesn't fit. There are no other SF2s in Hyde Park's in 100 years. The project still doesn't fit, so we need significant variances, five feet from Wason, seven feet from the trail. With the sidewalk, I'm gonna have a bike trail in my backyard. I really don't care about the five foot with the sidewalk. There's no space for parking for clients of these properties, which will have offices in them. Now, we need 12 parking spaces on Wason, also need a turn lane, crosswalk, driveways, restriping of Wason. Project will also need removal trees, which is the only buffer Portsmouth Avenue has from, and we are anti-development when I say this, a gas station, a parking lot, a grocery store, shopping center, billboards, telephone towers, and we will now have our bike trail. It appears that this project will have continuous needs. I was also involved when it was first rezoned as an SF6. There was no skaldogery going on. We went before city council, zoning planning, and we had attorney input, so there was no catalog that we could just pick out whatever zoning we wanted. I guess that when you decide on this issue, think if it were your neighborhood, how would you like this handled? The residents will have to live every day with what is being asked for today for a project for six $650,000 tax-abated properties. I'd also like to mention that there is a petition out there with over 1,500 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Gimbert, followed by Paul Rudolph.
I oppose the current proposal to rezone 3001 Wason Road from SF6 to SF2. Despite claims to the contrary, residents of impacted neighborhoods feel that this proposal's been fast-tracked through the planning commission without adequate community involvement. Community and neighborhood trust were lost when the advertised 133-foot rear yards were calculated by including a city park and a neighbor's rear yards. Personally, I have handed out over 500 informational flyers in the communities of Hyde Park, Oakley, East Walnut Hills, and Mount Lookout. I have spoken with residents in all of these communities. This is what I have heard from the street. One, homeowners do not want front and rear yard setbacks changing and variances granted that are not consistent with their original investment. Two, people are worried about safety. An independent traffic study should be a prerequisite before any kind of rezoning. And three, people are outraged about the encroachment on Wason Way Trail. Why would the city spend $12 million for a four-mile public bike trail and then grant a development project significant SECBAT variances so that it is only seven feet from the trail and provides significant benefits to a select group of private individuals? Please engage our neighborhood. Make the developer do due diligence so that planning and accountability are assured. Please allow civil discourse to occur. Several years ago, I had coffee with you, PG, at Coffee Emporium because you wanted community input about the reopening of Hyde Park School. In May, my twins graduated from Hyde Park Neighborhood School that serves Hyde Park, Oakley, and East Walnut Hills. That a school that rents space from Eagle Savings because there is not enough on space for students. A school that is vibrant and overflowing because there was community engagement and dialogue with neighborhood residents. Yesterday, my 13-year-old daughter cynically told me, "Mom, nothing is going to change. Council is going to ram it through because they are politicians and politicians don't care what people think." Please give my kids hope that although civil discourse is not occurring on the national level, be the example...
Next speaker is Paul Rudolph.
That world can be different.
Thank you. Sorry, two minutes apiece.
So thank you for the time. My name's Paul Rudolph. I'm part of the Hyde Park Neighborhood Council, a Hyde Park resident. I come here today to ask for a vote against this rezoning change on the Wason Road Trail. We need to get more community engagement with the proper due diligence before we make such a significant change to this parcel of land. In just a week, we've had almost 2,000 supporters that oppose this rezoning. And as we dig through the hundreds of comments and listen to them, there's a underlying sentiment that we're not anti-development, we just want the right type of development. So we've also had the fortunate opportunity to meet with most of the council members and we've heard you and the overall city plans and how this fits into the city's plans. And so if the city's going to move forward with the desire to put homes on this property, we want to make sure the right due diligence is formed to see what impact it's going to have on the neighborhood. Like you've heard, it's having a thorough, independent traffic study performed so we know how these driveways and these parking spots are going to impact safety. Right now, we don't know. We want to know exactly what's going to be built. We've seen drawings on PowerPoints, floor plans, but that's about it. Right now, we just don't know. We need to know how the watershed on any type of developments is going to impact not only this trail, but the elevated... the lower elevation houses that sit on Portsmouth below it. Right now, we don't know. And so if we talk about downzoning Hyde Park lots to high-density SF2 lots, it scares a lot of residents in Hyde Park. That's why they've come out in droves in opposition. And that fear comes from the unknown. We just don't know. We don't know enough about this project and we don't know what project might come down the street. So again, today, I ask you all to consider that we get more of the facts on the table, perform the appropriate studies before we go and rezone this parcel of land in Hyde Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Habeger, followed by Pamela Rosengard. And just to be clear, we... I have to cut everybody off at two minutes because we've been sued in the past if I give people more time than other people. I have to uniformly enforce it. I know people are down here because they feel very passionate and strong about the issues they're here. I apologize if I'm curt, but I just have to enforce the rules. Ms. Habeger.
Okay, great. I will not go over two minutes. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. Ms. Murray, I will give you an A+ today, just to let you know. So anyway, my name is Lisa Habeger. I've been a resident on Port 3182 Portsmouth Avenue for 15 years. I followed my husband here in '93. He's been a lifelong Hyde Park resident. His parents still live on Raymar Boulevard. I am here to ask you to at least postpone or deny the proposal for a change in zoning on 3001 Wason Road. And this is based on our concerns about safety on Wason Road. Again, it goes back to an independent study that we would really like to rely on, the survey of the land, particularly the elevation and water runoff. We are also really concerned about the encroachment on Wason Way. We're a very active family. Most Hyde Park people are active people and we want to use Wason Way in the way that we have envisioned it. So that is what I'm asking you for today and thank you for my... your time.
Thank you. Pamela Rosengard, followed by Denny Dellinger.
I would like to speak to the issue that has been raised that possibly Hyde Park residents are opposed to change just for opposition's sake. I can clearly speak against that. It is a fallacy. I speak from experience. In the last year, I personally met with several others, with many of you council members, about a development that was proposed on the Pig and Whistle site in Hyde Park. Because the Hyde Park residents were very opposed to that development, did not think that it met with the needs, that developer eventually pulled back. As soon as a new developer came in, worked with the community, came up with a development that the community very much agreed with, we immediately agreed and said, "We will support this." This is not ancient history. This happened within the... within the last 12 months. I would like to further say that, as a citizen of Hyde Park, I very much trust my Hyde Park Neighborhood Council. We are blessed in our Hyde Park Neighborhood Council to have engineers, architects, and zoning experts who have used their expertise to guide their decision. They spoke eloquently this morning in the hearing about why they are unanimously opposed to this zoning change. I don't think they did that on a whim. I think that they put great effort and thought into it. I trust them. And what is the point of having a neighborhood council if they are not listened to? Therefore, I ask you very much, please, listen to the Hyde Park Neighborhood Council, and I am told, I believe, that the Oakley Community Council voted the same way. Thank you for your time and effort. One last thing. By the way, I do walk all of Hyde Park every day, so I know about this area.
Thank you. Denny Dellinger, followed by Janet Buning.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cranley and council members. My name is Denny Dellinger. I'm Over-the-Rhine resident, and I'm an architect, and I'm here to support the zone change request from RM 1.2 Residential Multifamily to CCP Commercial Pedestrian Zoning District for the property bounded by Liberty Street, Elm, Green, and Race Streets. The current zoning is really not consistent with the historical pattern of development in Over-the-Rhine, which had mostly commercial uses on the ground floor and residential above. Currently, commercial uses are not permitted at all, even in buildings that originally had businesses. So, I support this zone change request, and I hope you do too. I think it will bring more commercial viability and new infill construction to that area of Over-the-Rhine. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Buning, followed by Joe Schnering.
Hello. I'm Janet Buning, Hyde Park Neighborhood Council trustee, chair of the plan, the development plan for Hyde Park, 40-some-year resident of the neighborhood. I want to start by thanking all the council members present today. Each of you took the time to come out in the heat and the mosquitoes and walk the property and find out what we're talking about. Because what we're talking about with this zone change from SF2 to SF, oh, I'm sorry, 6 to 2, is, at the end of the day, live work sounds great. It's a proper, it's a development that is just too small for the property that he wants to put it on. Changing the zone from SF6 to 2 does not make the lot any bigger. It is still a 40-foot wide lot. The city bought a 50-foot wide right-of-way to put the trail on. On that 40 feet of lot, Mr. French means to put six homes. Front doors will be about five feet from Wausen Road, very busy. Your backyard is seven feet deep and ends in a retaining wall. Because the documents that we've been seeing, that Planning Commission has, that we got from them, doesn't really show the grade studies. There's not been proper studies on this. But Mr. French himself has told us he has to put a retaining wall and that the trail will be at about the level of the second story of the buildings. So, there's some real concerns with runoff and everything else. We also salute the neighbors who have really organized themselves. They actually came to Neighborhood Council. And we did not register our objection prior to August 1st because due to an unfortunate mistake on the mailing, we did not get notice of that Planning Commission meeting. But the neighbors, I think the petition is nearing 2,000 signatures now. They are very engaged in this. And they're engaged in this because they have invested in the neighborhood. They bought into an SF6 zone. This is the typical zoning for Hyde Park. It is, kind of defines the characteristic. When you think of Hyde Park, you don't think of dense, urban-style development. You think of tree-lined streets and good things like that. I know my time is up. Please support the residents in our zoning code. Thank you.
Joe Schnering, followed by Tilly Pfeiffer.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Sinfield.
I just want, I know a number of folks are here for what will be the first item of business, a resolution on the council agenda, and obviously, we'll take everyone that's here for public comment, and then that will be the first thing up. I just want to make sure that people who are here for that knew that.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Schnering. I live at 3040 Portsmouth. I've been there 19 years. This project is right behind my house. I believe Portsmouth Avenue to be a premium street. We have premium homes, premium, it's a premium community, premium property values, and we pay premium taxes which float all boats. Hyde Park has grown to be a premium neighborhood because it has the Hyde Park Neighborhood Council. This council has outlasted many mayors, many council members, and many developers. It has outlasted these folks because it has been consistent. And now, because we've been consistent, we're considered anti-change. Nothing could be further from the truth. This project is not a premium value project. It does not fit. It changes Wausen Road from unsafe to high-risk. It changes SF6 to SF2, which could spark a wildfire throughout Hyde Park. We believe this parcel of land could be something special. It could be the gateway to many trails. It could be the John Cranley gateway to the Wausen Trail. Mr. Mayor.
No argument here.
Mr. Mayor, do not let this path become an alley between homes. Please get on the phone, call Norfolk, negotiate this property for that property, and make this a special gateway. We'll work diligently to make this safe and premier trail entry for trails across America. Thank you.
Thank you. Tilly Pfeiffer, followed by something Stefanik. Patty.
Patty.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cranley and council members. I do want to thank you for showing a lot of interest in our, in this issue by coming out to the, all the different onsite visits to the area in the discussion. I am opposed to this project. My family and I live on Portsmouth, and we've been there 15 years. And we have been concerned about the traffic congestion for a long time. I can speak from personal experience. On the other side of Wausen, on the other side of the Kroger filling station, a car pulled out in front of me from the Kroger lot, and it caused a pileup on the other side on Paxton. And a car coming towards me that couldn't stop for the pileup went around and rammed, actually hit me head-on, crashed my windshield, broke my hand, and totaled my car. And ever since then, I'm really careful how I drive. I try to drive slowly, for one thing. Right after that happened, an elderly gentleman was killed in the crosswalk from, that, on, when you're on Paxton, you bear right onto Wausen, and he was killed in that little crosswalk area. Another concern I have is that the parcel is actually a really good buffer. It prevents flooding, it filters pollution, and it provides a habitat for plants and animals. There's really no price on these kinds of qualities in a city. Everybody in America knows that the overdevelopment has caused major flooding and land problems. So, I think that this development would-
Thank you.
-not help the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Patty Stefanik, followed by Terry Garwin.
My handwriting is atrocious.
That's right.
I apologize. Good afternoon. My name is Patty Stefanik, and I live on Portsmouth Avenue in Hyde Park. I'm the daughter of the late Henry R. Stefanik, former director of the Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority. So, if you think I don't understand the importance and necessity of affordable housing in Cincinnati, you are mistaken. I do. But my concerns regarding this issue go beyond that. As our elected public officials, you have a duty to make decisions based on facts, awareness, community input, and with all the information needed available. I do not believe that you have what is needed at this time to make a fair and well-informed decision at this juncture. You do not have an official impartial traffic study of Wausen Road and the connecting intersections, a study that would undoubtedly negatively impact the developer's plan of 12 on-street parking spaces and six driveways leading to and from the proposed home office dwellings. Wausen is already a dangerous road. I'm concerned that a change in zoning to SF2 and subsequent development will greatly increase the risk of accidents and fatalities. You do not have an actual study of the developer's use of land and how his plans will impact the development and completion of the Wausen Trail, a trail that I envisioned enhanced by surrounding established trees and nature, not a trail bordered by retention walls and high-rise structures. Elimination of the trees and surrounding vegetation will disrupt the water table, will potentially increase the already existing issue of flooding in Portsmouth homes, and will remove the buffer minimizing as much as possible the noise created by the Hyde Park Plaza and Wausen traffic. The city has spent $12 million on the Wausen Trail project. Shouldn't its completion take precedence over any development of adjoining properties? Complete the trail and then decide what zoning makes good use of the remaining parcel of land. All I ask, we ask, is that you take the time to complete and review the reports and data, take the time to hear our voices and those voices of so many concerned community members, voices growing in strength and numbers, then make a fair, realistic, conscious decision from those who trust and believe in you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Garwin.
Hello. I think that we have zoning laws for a reason. They protect the neighborhoods that we all love and live in. When you change the zoning laws, I think it should be for a really good reason. I'm not an engineer, but I got to tell you, common sense tells me this is a poor layout. When I look at those houses and I look at the traffic in that area, it's horrible. Adding driveways to the Wausen Road is not going to fix anything, and it also handcuffs us from further development if the roads, roads are ever going to be widened and that intersection's ever going to be truly fixed, which someday we might have the money to do. And I think it's a problem to handcuff ourselves like that. I just don't understand it. I'm not against development, although I have to say, when I see dusty roads saying that 25%, we're approaching 25% tax-abated properties, and we have city schools that are getting a D-rating, all high schools, but one got an F-rating, and we're going to take 25% of their funding and give it to tax-abated properties? That's a problem. That's not fixing anything. That's not helping anything. That kind of development, I really don't believe we need. I don't think I'm going to give everybody a grade here like the previous gentleman, but I do have to say, Councilman Landsman, you ran on a platform of fixing the streetcar. Making the streetcar free is wrong on a lot of levels. First of all, it doesn't do anything but increase the millstone around the taxpayer's neck. And it also increases the ridership on what is already a frail system. Those cars are not reliable as it is. I'm glad we separated that from the metro, but making them free is a bad, bad idea.
Thank you. That concludes the business portion session of City Council.
You propose making the streetcar free?
We will now begin today's business portion of Cincinnati City Council, and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Pastor?
President.
Councilmember Silbock?
Here.
Councilmember Sinfield?
Here.
Councilmember Young?
Here.
Councilmember Landsman?
Here.
Will you stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Gennard will be excused from today's session of council. I'd like to recognize Councilman David Mann, a US Navy veteran, to present a presentation related to the very soon-to-be-commissioned USS Cincinnati. Councilman Mann.
Mr. Sinfield asked you to go first, and he's, uh, please, here.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to that. Councilman Sinfield, for the presentation of resolution recognizing and honoring our good friend Janie Katzman-Simon for her service to students at CPS and to education in general.
Great. So, could we get Jane, as well as everyone who's here because they love Jane, to come up to the front of chambers, please? Don't be bashful. Jane, bring your friends with you.
Bring them up.
This is a testament to what a huge fan club Jane has. So, as folks know, this is the last Wednesday of September. Coming out of Labor Day, for the first time this year, council has chosen to recognize people for the dignity of their work, for the joy of their work, and for their incredible contributions to the labor movement. So, I'm going to stray from the script here and just speak from the heart for a second about Jane Simon. Jane is famous in Cincinnati for a couple reasons that have to do with her incredible career and her professional contributions, including the fact that she started teaching at Cincinnati Public Schools in 1976, making her currently the longest-tenured teacher in all of Cincinnati Public Schools. I'm obligated to say, but it also is true, she, you would not have guessed, she doesn't look it. In spirit with this month coming out of Labor Day, the other reason we want to honor Jane is for her longstanding, tireless, many contributions to the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. So, give her a round of applause for that as well. The final thing I'm going to say before, actually, this is an official piece of city business, Jane, so we're going to vote on the resolution, and then we will bring it back for a word from you, and then a couple other friends who might want to say a word. I know we have President Julie Sellers here. We're hoping she might say just a word about Jane. But it's not the fact that she's the longest-tenured teacher currently in all Cincinnati Public Schools. It's not her many, many years of significant contributions to the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. It's what's in Jane's heart. She is kind, and loyal, and funny, and feisty, and clever, and awesome. And anytime anyone, I've learned this, and Michelle affirmed this yesterday, anytime you mention the name Jane Simon, it's not like, "Oh, yeah, we like her." She's, people absolutely gush. To listen to her former students talk about their love for her is to recognize somebody that's made an incredible sort of impact in so many people's lives, frankly, for multiple generations. So, let's now do the official piece of business, calling for a roll call vote on the resolution recognizing and honoring Jane E. Katzman-Simon for her service to students and families of Cincinnati Public Schools and within the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. Mr. Mayor, we can do a roll call.
Roll call on adoption of the resolution.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Landsman?
Yes.
Unanimous. Give Jane a round of applause, please.
I didn't know, I had no idea I was going to speak, because normally, I'm sitting there for school nurses, crossing guards, tax abatement, whatever. So, being in front here is very, I'm very grateful. And you should be all glad that when we did do endorsements, I didn't, since I teach dance and have taught dance for a very long time, as you know, I didn't rate you on your flexibility, your timing, your coordination. So, next time, maybe. Next time, maybe. But I thank you all, and I especially thank all the wonderful parents and students, grandparents of all the kids that I have taught over the years. That's who I fight for every day. That's whom I- That's who I fight for every day, that's whom my union fights for, and we make our better, a better place for our city, and as you well know, I wouldn't be the political action legislative chair if I didn't say, "Issue 12 is on the ballot, and you all need to vote for our kids, for our schools." Don't forget, and I thank you so much, this is a great honor. Thank you so much. I would just like to say how proud Cincinnati Federation of Teachers is of Jane Simon. She has been around and she has been involved every year of her career, so for the total 40-something years. Her first year in Cincinnati Public was the last time there was a strike here in Cincinnati, and she was on that strike line starting on, I think, before she received her first paycheck. And so I just would like to say, she is the face of labor in Cincinnati, and she's done a great job over the years, and we are all proud of her. Thank you.
I just want to quickly add, Jane, thank you for being here. I reiterate everything Councilman Sittenfeld said. In addition to your incredible public service, you are truly an incredibly nice person. When I was a kid, the nuns said, "A smile spreads a mile." If you smile down the street, other people will smile, and then that smile will spread a mile, and you are that kind of person that people are happier in your presence, and that's a wonderful gift.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mann.
Two of my grandchildren, well, one is graduating, the other is at SCPA, and they love you, and that's the best testament of all, so congratulations and thank you.
I know other people are going to speak, but since Councilman Mann said something, and I know that we're all friends, I think it's worth pointing out that it's David Mann's 39th birthday today. Today is his actual birthday, so let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you. I'll be brief, but I couldn't let this opportunity pass without praising Jane. I didn't know this was going to happen, but I'm certainly pleased to see it. I too have people at SCPA, and everyone who ever mentions your name, Mr. Mayor, that smile you're talking about, they always smile, and I think it would really be nice for me to mention the fact that one of the people who praises you the most is Cedric Denson, who used to be my chief of staff and is now a state representative, and he can't say enough nice things about you. And fortunately, I've known you for a while, so I can agree. And for the record, if my wife was here, she'd be jumping up and down with joy for you. So congratulations, this is an honor well deserved.
Councilman Landsman.
I just will reiterate that one thing about Jane, and that is, and it's perhaps one of the best qualities a human being can have, that you just are happier, you know, in your presence, like just everyone, like when I see you, I'm just, I'm immediately happier, and I don't know if there's a better quality, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Pastor.
I want to say, as a CPS alumnus and a father, which my daughter is here, she's playing hooky today, she goes to SCPA. I did attend SCPA, I was in dance before I hit puberty, so I was a little embarrassed in Miss X's sign class, Miss Roseau, your colleagues, but as a CPS alumnus and a father of four, I just want to say congratulations. I certainly appreciate my public school, I certainly appreciate the teachers having to put up with those rambunctious kids every now and again, including my four, so thank you for all your service to the city of Cincinnati.
So, Mr. Chair, a final piece of housekeeping, since Jane has brought a large fan club with her. If everyone can assemble on the steps, the marble steps outside, we'll do a group picture, and then in the spirit of showing off your flexibility and dexterity, for all who are able, will you stand up and as we walk out, give Jane a standing ovation and a big round of applause?
All right, next, we are going to have this, Councilman Silbuck.
I just, I think Jane is a resident of Hyde Park still, right? Did you have an opinion on this development that you wanted to share? Congratulations.
Next, we're going to have an exciting presentation about the USS Cincinnati, although when I look up at this picture, I frankly thought the ship was going to be bigger than that, but we'll see, we'll see what the presentation has to say.
That is, that is not the USS Cincinnati.
Oh, okay, great.
We do have a video that will, a very short video that will have some very exciting footage of the USS Cincinnati, so I want to do two things. Number one, a week from Saturday, we should all be excited about the fact that the USS Cincinnati, the fifth ship to bear our community's name, will be commissioned in Gulfport, Mississippi. The mayor has asked me to represent him there, I'm very proud to do that. Former Secretary of Commerce Penny Pritzker, who is the ship's sponsor, will be present. I learned yesterday that Congressman Brad Weinshrup will be there from our community. But secondly, in addition to the joy of a new ship and all that it can mean for our community and our country, I wanted to bring together some of the folks that have been very busy as part of the USS Cincinnati Commissioning Foundation, raising funds, planning, and most importantly, establishing a scholarship fund for the families of the crew members of the USS Cincinnati. And Vince Scott, the chair, who is not, who's out of town just now, told me yesterday that so far, y'all have raised $425,000, and your goal is to
That's great.
end up having raised three-quarters of a million dollars, and that will have a tremendous impact on the lives of the families of the crew of the USS Cincinnati, and that's very important. And I think most of you are going down to Gulfport, and I just want to explain some of the things that are going to happen there. First of all, let's show the video so we have some appreciation of what we're looking at. How do we, does anybody know how to run that? Thank you. The fast hug. This is when she was put in the water. She's made out of aluminum, so the days of chipping rust are gone. It's a trimaran, which, trimaran, which means it has a triple hull, it's propelled by four water jets. No rudder, the water jets move, swivel, she can, we're told she can do 50 knots, she probably can do more, and they can't tell us. She can go, she will be going to sea with an initial crew of 70 people, as I understand it. Her initial home port will be San Diego, and she will have a primary mission of minesweeping, which is very important in the days of all the different kinds of mines that are used. She has a Star Wars look to her, as you can see, nothing like anything I sailed on. We're going to see her underway here in a second. She's called an LCS, which means Toral Combat Ship, her hull number is 20. The first USS Cincinnati was a Civil War riverboat. The second two were cruisers in World War I and World War II respectively, and the fourth was the, an attack submarine, which actually was commissioned in the '70s and taken out of service, I think, in the '90s. She was built in Mobile, Alabama, at the Oyster Shipyard. We don't have any, oh well, take my word for it, she's a beautiful ship, so.
Isn't that it?
We've had a lot of support from the city, the city manager has arranged for this flag to be presented to the captain of the ship next Friday night. Pete Witty, our own Pete Witty, with his engraving company, is producing a plaque of this size, which I talked to the captain about this a couple weeks ago, and in metal form, it'll be posted on the mess decks where the crew eats their meals, and it has the key to the city, a proclamation signed by the mayor and the like. And each, let me, why don't you each introduce yourselves and interact. Thank you, sir. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the city and all the great supporters. Without the people here and our friends, our great donation group would not have been successful. The key point to our endowment for the crew and members of their family is education. You spoke earlier about the great work being done here and the member who received the accolades today. We want to do the same thing, but not just with traditional education, but also non-traditional in the sense that. We'd like to be able to bring back support for craftsmen, tradesmen, so if these crew members' families want to be a machinist, or a plumber, or an electrician, that they will be able to get their support and tuition support as well. We think that's important for our country. I'd like to take a moment and pass the mic to other members of the crew, and then we'll have a small presentation for the city.
Thank you, George. I'm Jim Brokaw. I'm an Ohio boy that is retired Navy, and very proud to be a part of bringing our ship to life and supporting our sailors and their family over the lifetime of the ship, and I want to thank you, the city, and you city leadership for helping us out.
I'm Paul Fellinger. I'm a, actually, an Army retired colonel. No one's got the big L on my forehead sitting up here. I'm actually the director of events for the Commissioning Foundation.
I'm Heather Whitten, volunteer on the events committee for the USS Cincinnati, and also an employee of the finest police department in the country, City of Cincinnati Police Department. I'm helping coordinate some of the events and helped coordinate the design and production of the plaques, and my brother is in the Navy, which kind of what kind of got us interested, my whole family.
I'm Heidi Meckley-Feltin. I'm a West Side gal by birth and a Hyde Park resident now, but we won't talk about that anymore. I've been helping coordinate the fundraising, and any of you that wish you could go to Gulfport now in two weeks but can't, you can go to the museum center and watch a livestream, or you can watch it on Fountain Square. And we also have a neat exhibit in the arena, or the atrium of the museum center, showing all of the former Cincinnatis in model form, so stop by to see those if you can.
I'm Barry Whitten. I'm Heather's dad. My son is in the Navy, very proud of him, and I'm also part of the events committee in 40-year, coming up on 40 years with the city of Cincinnati, in the police department as well, and been working on a lot of things, taking our float to different events, the Kentucky Speedway, the 40s Day event at Union Terminal, and also at Paddle Fest for an awareness and letting people know about our ship.
You're responsible for the cameras that are around the city to support the police and provide safety, we thank you for that very much. I should have mentioned, the engines for this ship were manufactured by General Electric right here in Evendale. That's part of the reason that Verden Bell has produced a ship's bell. You can't have a ship without a bell that, when you encounter fog and the like, and the city manager also supported the provision of various street signs with Cincinnati names on them that will, as I understand, be posted in various parts of the ship. So it's going to, it's going to be hard not to see Cincinnati there. Montgomery Inn is involved in some of the food that will be provided the Friday and Saturday next week, and my wife and I are very appreciative, because the day of the commissioning is our wedding anniversary, so what can we say? No good deed would go unpunished, right? So we're going to say thanks to everyone here, and I would encourage you to look at our website, www.cincinnaticommissioning.org. Great place, you're all invited to make a donation, there's a position there to do that, and without further ado, let me offer this. This is a plank owner's plaque, very traditional, that members of the crew that are present at the initial commissioning will receive one, and their name will be applied along the bottom. So I'd like to present this to Mayor Crandley. You would, sir?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This will hang permanently in the mayor's office, we will put it up on the wall as a permanent installation. Thank you very much. And let me just add, if you don't mind, a few words. First of all, thank you to this committee for raising significant financial contribution to this wonderful event for our country. On a personal note, I want to recognize the Whittens for their support to our police department over many decades, Mr. Whitten in particular, and Heather for becoming a friend and a resident of the Incline District of Price Hill. And I also want to acknowledge my great personal friend Heidi Meckley-Feltin, who I've known in various ways through family, friends for decades, and to be volunteers on this great effort is a great deal of pride for our city and for our country. I also want to point out that my grandfather, my maternal grandfather, was a graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy, spent his career in the Marines, and met my grandmother in San Diego when he was commissioned there, which led to me, of course, and so it's pretty cool that USS Cincinnati is heading back to San Diego. I would love to be there with you next week, and trust me, I've heard the requests for me to be there. I will be at the same time that you are commissioning this, working in a bipartisan manner with mayors across the country to push for changes to gun legislation consistent with what Governor DeWine has been offering related to background checks and in light of the safety of mass shootings and that we had at Fountain Square and in Dayton, those kinds of changes will make a difference to keep us safer and to protect our police, which our police chief is advocating for as well. So I heard the invitation, I apologize, I can't be there, but candidly, in my humble opinion, you got a better option in that David Mann was not once served in one term as mayor, but twice served as mayor of the Cincinnati and was a U.S. congressman and is a Navy veteran. So I candidly think you're better represented by him, but either way, I apologize for not being there.
Well, thank you, sir, we appreciate that, and again, on behalf of the officers and crew of the newly commissioned USS Cincinnati, and our chairman Vince Scott, who's unable to be here tonight, I want to say thank you all once again, and fair win and following seas. Good day.
Thank you all. The item that we heard the most speakers about related to the zoning issue of Hyde Park on Wasson Road, which is item 33, without objection, we will take up that item first in interest of people's time.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Pastor.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Not to belabor the point, but we, Councilwoman Murray and her committee, we heard from the residents abstained in the committee, simply because I think that, given information that has been presented to my office, some concerns I share on both sides of the issue, I would like to see this held before I, you know, cast a vote. I don't know if any other councilmembers feel the same way, but certainly want to make sure that I make the right decision, and at this juncture, because of additional information, I think that it's best to hold this item until further information is received.
Mr. Chair. Wow.
Mr. Silbuck.
Next you know, I'll be chairing the meeting. I agree that we should hold it. You say that you have done a traffic study, can you please share that with the neighborhood? I don't know that it will change their mind, but it's one of the pieces that they say is missing. I think that there are also, and this is probably committee work, which is why we should hold it, but, you know, I think there needs to be some kind of response to the letter from Tim Burke that we received, and I think that that's important as well. And then any other questions that the neighborhood has that can be answered, regardless if it changes their opinion or not, I think we need those answers before we can make a fully-informed vote. So I think the right thing to do is hold it.
So is that a motion to refer back to committee? Yes, that's my motion.
Is that seconded? Is that seconded? Okay. Roll call on referral. Mr. Chair. Mr. Sittenfeld. I'll just make one quick comment. You know, I'm appreciative that Mr. French and people like Mr. French want to
You know, I'm appreciative that Mr. French and people like Mr. French want to invest in our city. I'm also appreciative that the people of Hyde Park, a neighborhood I was born in, where my parents live at present day and where there's a, you know, a wide network of relationships, care as much about their community and the future of their community as they do. I'm also fine holding this today. I hope that a hold can be as fruitful as possible. I actually, after being with 10 community members yesterday morning and having, you know, I guess it was briefed by Mr. French a number of months back on the project and tried to follow along the way, I do think that there might be more space to reconcile some things than, than sometimes felt, to be honest, kind of part of the dialogue. And I do just want to say, like, I think that high-quality sort of urban density, especially in a parcel that I have known my entire life, I think there's a way of getting to something that feels like, like a win-win. So I'm fine supporting the motion to hold this. I hope that it is fruitful. And to the extent that, you know, if I can play any role, bringing the parties together, being present, and if I can't, you know, I'm happy to butt out. If I can, would like to, because I think that there's a possibility to get closer than, you know, the current sort of discourse makes it seem like. So I hope it's a productive hold. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, other comments? No other comments, I understand we have a motion to send it back to committee, is that correct? Roll call on approval of that motion.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
It's referred back.
Okay. So that means it'll go back to Councilmember Murray's committee? And, okay, do you know when that meeting is?
Well, we have a meeting next Tuesday, but I can't imagine that all of the information will be together by that date. I want to let people know, since we have a lot of community members here, so we can either schedule it for the first or the 15th. Is there, 15th? So we'll go ahead and make sure that that's added to the Economic Growth Committee on Tuesday, October 15th at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Pastor.
I also want to say to the residents and to the developer that my office is still willing, more than willing to engage, make another visit with chocolate chip cookies, should you have it. So we don't, we want to be a part of every step of the process and work with any other council member as well.
I think we, given it's Mr. Mann's birthday, I think we all deserve chocolate chip cookies. Who is in head of the Sunshine Committee?
I think Mr. Pastor.
I'm not going to forget that, Mr. Mayor.
I'd say who has not been, I know Ms. Murray and I have both been chairs of it, so maybe Mr. Sittfeld, you should chair it next?
I second.
Next item of business, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving back to the beginning of our agenda. Item one, roll call and adoption of the motion.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Items two through five is indicated. Item six has been dealt with. Item seven through 24 is indicated. Item 25, first reading.
Orders approving and authorizing execution of a job creation tax credit agreement with Q Labs.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray? Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray? Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Item 26, first reading.
Orders designating Hopkins Street, Chestnut Street, Elizabeth Street, and Weninger Circle, and portions of Ezra Charles Drive, Clark Street, Mound Street, and John Street as a residential parking permit area.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
I assume this is going to pass as well as the one in Hyde Park. I just want to reiterate my longstanding belief that this is not a prudent use of public space. In addition, the administration has prepared a report that says that the general fund is subsidizing these projects by not charging the appropriate amount of money to pay for the enforcement. So essentially, and especially in the case of the Hyde Park permit, you're talking about essentially subsidizing a wealthier part of town, a neighborhood I happen to live in too, at the expense of other basic services. I think it's only fair that if council is going to continue to approve these permit areas, that they amend it to capture the actual cost of privatizing public space to the benefit of private homeowners. Any other comments? If not, roll call and passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Pastor?
Which item?
26.
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Okay, we're being asked that item 31 be voted on before 27 for some legal reasons. Without objection, 31, first reading.
Emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property located at 1118 Sycamore Street.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor? Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young? Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And emergency.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Okay, now we're back to 27. First reading.
Orders establishing priority order of property tax exemptions granted for certain real property located at 1118 Sycamore Street.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Item 28, first reading.
Orders designating portions of Green Street, Grandin Road, Freeland Avenue, Herrick Avenue, Elm Ford Place, and the Hyde Park neighborhood as a residential parking permit area.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Item 29, first reading.
Emergency ordinance authorizing city manager to apply for acceptance appropriate grant resources awarded by the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And emergency.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Item 30, first reading.
Emergency ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a property exchange agreement with the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And passage.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
And emergency.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Pastor?
Yes.
Councilmember Silbo? Councilmember Sittfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Lansman?
Yes.
Item 31 has been dealt with. Item 32, first reading.
Emergency ordinance repealing the Cincinnati Municipal Code Section 301-21 compulsory retirement to reflect the city's current policy and practice regarding compliance with Age Discrimination in Employment Act.
Suspension.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?